Number 10th meeting of the planning commission order will begin with the pledge to the flag, please.
Pledge to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Ed, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Tiedemann.
Here.
Mr. Varga.
Here.
Mr. Cicero.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Haddon.
Here.
Mr. Perkovich.
Here.
Mr. Snow.
Here.
Entertained a motion for the pool of minutes in the August 20th meeting.
I'll move.
Second.
Ed, when you're ready.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes.
We have two public hearings this evening. We're going to consolidate the two items, and then we'll perhaps pick up item five at the same time. So, the public hearing this evening is a conditional use permit to allow a drive-through facility at 7715 Mennor Avenue. Is that applicant here? The format we'll follow is we'll allow the applicant an opportunity to tell us what they want to do at a particular location, and those wishing to speak in favor are afforded a similar opportunity, and those wishing to speak against are afforded an opportunity to speak against.
Like the engineer is on the...
Hi, yes. My name's Brent Artman. I'm the engineer for the project.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead and tell us what you want to do.
Go ahead and tell us what you want to do. I represent the owner of the property. He is proposing to build a 2,200 square foot Starbucks on the corner of Highway 22 there, Plaza Boulevard, and the old Toys R Us complex there. He wants to build, like I said, a 2,200 square foot Starbucks with a drive-through facility and new parking for the project.
Okay. Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Anyone wishing to speak against?
Anyone wishing to speak against?
Okay, we'll close the public portion. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Varga, any comments?
For the applicant, I just, I was a little unclear, at least it was a little unclear in your site plan. I just want to verify that there's a one-way-in off of Mennor Avenue heading west. The drive that comes in, that'll be one-way.
It comes in only?
Oh, boy.
Yeah, it'll remain as it is today, yes, which is a one-way-in.
Are you proposing another?
Are you proposing another?
This is...
This is...
Are you proposing another?
Are you proposing another entrance?
On the Plaza Boulevard?
On the Plaza Boulevard? No, we're using the existing entrance on Plaza Boulevard.
Okay, that's good.
Okay, that's good. I would...
Okay, commissioners, any questions?
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
This is Mr. Cicero.
Go ahead.
Can the applicant just walk through the traffic flow? I understand now how the cars will come in. Can you walk through how cars will exit?
Actually, there's two ways, like you said, there's two ways into the property. The right turn in off of 20, and then a full curb cut there on Plaza Boulevard, just north of where we are proposing the Starbucks. As the, you know, all of the drives will remain two-way except for the drive up against Plaza Boulevard would become a one-way to not have conflicting traffic exiting the drive-through and people traversing north towards the exit. So, the traffic would go around the building and would have to exit up on the Plaza Boulevard, but can enter off of both off of 20 and off of Plaza Boulevard.
So, the Plaza Boulevard would be?
So, the Plaza Boulevard would be a right and left turn, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, it's a full curb cut, both ways. It exists that way today.
Mr. Chairman?
We would want to see signage at that Mennor Avenue entrance click from the inside that clearly designates it as not an exit. Still there?
Are you there, applicant?
Yes, yes, I am. You know, we do not have a problem placing signage out there. I'm not positive it doesn't exist now, but if it doesn't, we'll make sure that it does once this project is completed.
And I have another question.
And I have another question.
Yes, sir.
You gave us a sheet with sampled exterior.
With sample exterior finished.
Are you asking us to make a decision tonight?
I believe that the owner is asking to make a decision tonight, yes.
Kathy, is that your understanding?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. But we're just talking preliminary, and then the conditional use permit for both outdoor outside dining as well as the drive-through.
It's not a decision for the...
Well, preliminary only. So, the final architectural review will be based on, we'll come in with some updated. We have a number of conditions that hopefully the applicant is comfortable addressing, and if the board is agreeable to them, then ask for them to obviously keep those in the next submission.
That would mean that we're not actually going to make a decision on the appearance or our... They gave us three pallets, and he just said he was expecting us to make a decision tonight on which one we preferred.
Pallet.
Yeah.
That's totally up to you.
Because my first thought is that pallet C might be more appropriate for Mennor, a slightly reddish brick. Pallet A seems to be quite, kind of bland, just white, with, you know. But I'll open that up to the rest of the...
So, let me ask this question. Is this comparable to the Starbucks at 306 and Tyler?
Well, he's on mute right now. The feedback we're getting is from his mic, so it looks like they're muting him.
Turn it on.
Yep.
So, is this similar?
So, is this similar to 306 and Tyler?
That I'm not aware of. I don't know what the one on 306 and Tyler looks like. They update their prototypes on a consistent basis. So, I'm not sure when that one was constructed.
Maybe we could postpone.
Maybe we could postpone the decision on...
To the final submission.
To the final submission.
Okay, there are two conditions for the CUP for the drive-through and two conditions for the CUP for the patio.
I got a quick...
Chairman?
Yes.
We should vote on those individually.
Okay.
Kathy, is this a separate parcel? Is this going to be?
It will be.
It will be.
It will be.
And there's two areas of concern of the administration. Is that going to be addressed in that condition?
We're asking for a circulation plan, yeah. So, that will have to be provided with the next submission.
So, we're going to...
And they can't do anything with the drive-through until they get...
So, we're going to actually see the traffic flow that you guys, that the administration wants to see before, after we vote on the approval?
Well, it's, if you approve the conditions as we proposed it...
So, we'll see all that?
It's all contingent upon them submitting that. So, they can't...
Because it seems like they got a lot of work to do. Okay, all right.
The image that was just on the screen, I don't know if you could put that back, that of the building. That's the A pallet. To me, that's a little bland, and that's why I'm kind of opening it up for more discussion or putting that decision off until the...
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
That is the Starbucks at 306 and Tyler.
Oh.
Next to Mission Barbecue?
Correct.
Yeah.
Oh, that's a photograph?
That's a Google.
Could also ask the applicant to provide three different renderings.
Yeah.
It might have been. It was like during construction.
Okay, so let's make, well, that's a condition for which of these, the site plan? So, I propose, well, I don't want to get off our order here, but I would propose an additional condition that we would see renderings of each of the three pallets for the final approval.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the administration.
Right ahead.
Kathy, with the parking situation, are they short on parking?
Based on, if you look at the parking analysis that we did, we're showing that the overall site for both the coffee shop and the retail building would require 275 spaces. The way they've designed it, as best we can tell, they're showing 265 spaces. So, they would be short in 10 spaces, which you, of course, can approve if you're comfortable with that. Or they also, I think, in the upcoming submission, which we don't have the, which you guys didn't see here, they actually are going to show some landbank parking spaces. So, that might help with the situation.
Well, you know, I know we're going to see the traffic flow at the final, but I'm just looking and making an observation that they have a, they have the queue line for the drive-through, and they stop it just before it gets to the two, the main lane and the entrance going into the property. However, just based on the traffic that I see at the Mennor Avenue and Heasley facility that they have, that queuing line goes all the way around the building.
That building's four times the size of this.
Yeah. And that all the way around the building, when it comes around on the west, on the east side, doesn't interfere with the traffic flow because it's a one-way drive. So, my only concern when they come back with the next traffic flow diagram, it's not a condition of approval today, but they should look forward to explaining what happens when the queue line gets longer than where they show it, because I've seen the lines, and they're quite long. To their benefit, good for them. But that would block the main drive off of Mennor Avenue, even to get to the, what the stores are in the back, assuming they become operable stores again. I don't, I don't, I keep telling you to put my hands on my face. It's just...
Okay. I just have one comment relative to parking situation. And the bin store has a lot of customers, and they've taken over a good deal of that parking lot. So, I'm just curious as to how we're going to deal with that. Yes.
What's not showing on the screen is the side parking, I think, would have to be more heavily utilized than currently is. That's where we account for the additional parking moving forward.
You mean next to the formerly Toys R Us?
Right here, yep. That's all part of it. Actually, it's all under the same ownership for some reason. It's showing a different parcel, which we're not sure why, because the personal name, but nonetheless, that's all of their parking.
Right. It's not included in your 275.
It is.
It is.
Yep.
What about on the west side? There's a service drive, but there's a large green space there. Is that the banked parking area? Is that?
Larry, oh, yeah, you want to put up there. This we received, unfortunately, the day the packets went out, and this is what they, I think they're working on for the next submission. But you can see some landbanks parking spaces on the west side.
Scroll up a little bit so we can see the plan there. Well, scroll, scroll.
Starbucks, yeah, building.
I still see, if everyone can see, there's, yeah, that the driveway comes in, it goes right into that lane.
Yep.
That lane, is that two-directional lane there?
It is.
It is. So, my concern is at the top where that, you know, they've got, I don't know, six or seven, eight cars parked there. But as soon as they start backing up, they back up into a two-lane driveway, which sounds to me like a real problem.
You could experience what you see at Chick-fil-A. You know, that's, you know, they just recently updated their, or they're still in the process of, but you have the drive-through lanes up against the parking lot, the parking aisle. It does certainly get some challenges.
But my concern is that that entrance off of Mennor Avenue is not just for them, though. You know, now that's to the, the stores to the north, and that would have people trying to drive through and have other people waiting to make the left-hand turn into that queuing line. That could be kind of dicey. I think they should address that somehow. I'm not sure that plan is going to work.
Larry, do you want to unmute Mr. Artman? If he has any comments?
I understand your concern about the queuing on the drive-through. You know, that's just something we're going to have to look at as far as the traffic flow around the building. That's just something we're going to have to address. That lane may have to become one-way in order to prevent that type of thing happening.
You see what I mean?
You see what I mean? Yes, yes, I absolutely see what you mean.
See what I mean, you see. See what I mean, you see.
And what's the pledge of the commission?
What's the pledge of the commission?
Motion to approve with the two conditions on the conditional use permit drive-through.
Do your second.
Second.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes. Okay, now for the outdoor patio.
We check and see if there's any comments or anything on the outdoor patio for the conditional use permit for the patio?
Yes, there's three items.
No, I'm sorry. Are there any people in the audience? Just check with Larry.
Larry, anybody who wants to...
There is no one in the audience speaking against this request.
Thank you, Larry.
What's the pledge of the commission?
To approve with three conditions. That would be third.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes.
Okay. What's the pledge of the commission on number five?
I'm just looking to see if my concerns about the queuing line is covered under the number four condition. Yeah, I think it's, I think it's covered. So, we would approve for, with 10 conditions?
Are we adding the 11th for the three, looking at the three plaits?
Oh, yes, yes. I'm sorry, forgot. Yes, three, the three architectural elevations. And we'd like to see of all four sides. So, that would be approved with the 11 conditions, the 11th being architectural renderings of each of the three pallets for the full elevations or full exterior of the buildings.
Do your second. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes.
Item three, is that applicant here?
Larry, I don't see him. Yeah, I don't see him at all.
Okay, we're going to move on. Item four. Kathy, you ready?
Sure.
Entertain a motion to remove it from the table.
I'll move.
Do your second.
Second. Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes.
Right ahead, Kathy.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, hopefully you've had a chance to read through the changes. I've, based on our discussion at the July, I believe it was July 30th meeting, we honed in on a couple of specific items. The first being with regard to, and I'm on the definitions page, with regard to breaking out how vending machines are defined versus storage of bags of ice, that kind of icebox storage. In my research, they're really called cold storage units or merchandise units. So, we've added that language, that definition, and also added some language because in those cases, obviously, you're not necessarily providing money into the box. You're paying, you know, the retailer on-site. So, we've made some clarifications to that. But I think they both function the same way, the vending machine and the cold storage unit in terms of its appearance on-site and how much room it takes up on-site. So, if you have any concerns with that definition, that bleeds into the updates that I made to 116104C, which is vending machines, cold storage units. And I think based on some of the comments from our law director about how some of the original verbiage was made, we basically have revised this to indicate that we are encouraging vending machines and these cold storage units inside whenever possible. But if somebody chooses to locate it outside, then it has to go to Planning Commission for approval.
Mr. Miller, do you have anything?
I just want to make that clear, that that's the law director's position was, you know, under this definition, it's still possible to have, for example, a store that's too small, a red box, something like that, that would allow for them to say it's too small, so it has to go outside. So, that's what Mr. Zeman wanted to make sure that, you know, you have that in mind. Should we have more standards in that definition or not? We certainly appreciate all the work Kathy's done. She's done a ton of work here. But he just wanted to make sure that, you know, we know. Because I've been in a position myself when I've walked into courtroom where they've said, "That's all well and good counsel, but where are your standards?" And that's the only thing I'm a little nervous about, and that's what Mr. Zeman's nervous about, and that's, we respectfully ask that to be considered. Now, if the commission's fine with these being inside or having it the way it is here, that's purely a planning issue. The law department has no business to weigh in. We'll leave that to the commission on that.
Okay. Commissioners, any comments?
Well, I'm just looking at that aspect of the vending machines and under, I guess, let's see, what is it? It's, I'm looking for the, yeah, 116104C. There's, there's no language at all that would suggest screening, which would put the full weight of the requirement of screening on the planning commission. Not that we couldn't do that, but wouldn't it be, wouldn't it make some sense to include the possibility that screening would be required so that it's not just arbitrary on our part?
Any comments from the administration?
You can certainly, we could certainly add language that reflects the need for screening. I take these types of items to be something that, in order for them to be effective outside, they have to have some level of visibility. So, if they're not, if they're completely screened, then they're going to have no use to be outside. So, but if you wanted to add some language that said, "If the planning commission deems it appropriate, screening shall be made part of the approval," you could certainly do that. I mean, and there's other language and other sections to lean on at the time of approval that you could use. I think it would be, again, determined on a case-by-case basis, depending on the unit. And I guess I'd like to go back to what Mr. Miller said. Were you referring to the definition or the section 116104C?
Basically, the section. It doesn't, it doesn't appear in Mr. Zeman's mind that they're eliminating the possibility that one of these units could be placed outside. You could still place it outside the store because there's no standards to say. You establish it's not possible to put it inside because the store is too small. You establish it's not possible to put it inside because it's a 24/7 red box type situation. That's all they have to do is come to you and say, "Well, we can't do it." And then unfortunately, we're possibly defending a lawsuit on this without the standard.
Well, and I think because of the hardship in language that we used before, I was taking the approach of just basically encouraging them to be located inside. However, if they, and again, without going into too much scenarios, if they choose to have it outside, then it's got to go through the planning commission review, just like all these other outdoor storage type units, and left it simple. I mean, but if in terms of what, I thought it wasn't appropriate to add standards of what constituted when it should be inside. It's just a statement saying encouraging it to be inside. If you want that struck, we can take that out altogether and just say, "When vending machines are proposed to be located outside the building," I could take out that whole first sentence and start with the second sentence. "When they are proposed to be located outside the building, shall first approval in the area where they are on a site plan."
That would work. I'd be okay with that.
And I've thought more about what I stated just before. Now, I'm thinking about the possibility, and it's somewhat defended by the fact that you don't want it to obstruct a walkway or passageway. The idea that the vending machine is somehow incorporated into the architecture of the building, meaning that, you know, instead of just placing it where people walk, that you, you might put it into a building alcohol, that you push it back into the building. You can have it in front, but it's not sitting, it's not sitting out in front of the elevation of the building. I'm trying to think.
Yeah, you're kind of describing F. Should it, should it default? Yeah, if you look at F, the parcel drop-off and pickup boxes, should it have to meet those types of requirements if it's placed outside the building? Because that talks about lighting, it makes it secure. Maybe we just default to another requirement within the code.
I mean, we could, I'm just trying to think. Typically, they build the building, they have a covered walkway in front. There's an afterthought. They place these vending machines in the walkway under the covered approach.
Right.
And what I'm suggesting is a requirement that says they have to integrate it into the design of the building. So, that they would, they want to have machines in front, they're recessed into the elevation, you know, but they don't block at all the passageway in front of the building, which literally puts it within the footprint of the building, but it's on the, not gaining a benefit of more commercial space by sticking, sticking it on the outside.
Mr. Miller, does that satisfy law director? Want to make that, want to make that a condition, Mr. Varga?
Yeah, I'm not sure about all the language. Kathy, you understand what I'm getting at? Is that, is that by following the lead here, that it says it doesn't obstruct the public or private walkway, that it's incorporated into the footprint of the building?
Okay, I can, sure, I can certainly add that as a, as another sentence.
And that would give us some, the commission some leverage in being, how we would ask them to meet that requirement. So, it's not just arbitrarily our point of view.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Well, let's touch base a little bit on F. Now, this is the section that would encompass the tonic boxes, 20-foot-long. Now, this is the section that would encompass the conic boxes, 20-foot long by seven-foot high by essentially 35 feet long, whatever they are, whatever a conics box is. So, I'm trying to envision like where one of these would be placed. So, would it be like at the end of a strip plaza? Because it can't be facing the right-of-way. It would have to be like at the end of a...
On the side of the building?
On the side of a building. And...
Both sides of the building is a fire lane.
I mean, to put a box of that size somewhere is going to be tough in itself.
I know.
They're not that deep. They're just, they can be long. Larry, do you want to put up that photo that shows? We did some more research, and what we found were these lockers, they vary in length, and they can be six feet, and then they go in increments of three. So, then they could be six, nine, 12, 15, and so on. And so, depending on the location and need, I guess, is how they would be regulated. There, you can see there and at the bottom, the sizes. And the larger numbers up top represent the number of units within each area. So, that's, I guess, that's what we were thinking of. When we talked about this last time, we talked about at what point do you, the Planning Commission, review it versus us? And that's why we added number seven.
A greater than a three by five.
Basically, you know, the typical UPS or FedEx box that you see, there's a few on Center Street right now and a couple of retail centers. They're on the side of the building. They just put them there. They wouldn't need to come to you for you. But once we get into anything that's, that is of these locker sizes, whether we're talking about, you know, pickup of larger parcels, that's when we thought it made most sense to go to the Planning Commission. And yeah, it, you know, you have to be comfortable with where they would be located. So, number one says, "Located on the side or rear wall of the main building on-site." We had a couple of requests for this, and I can think of two different locations. They were a standalone, single-use retail building. They had the ability to put it on the side of the building. That's where they wanted it.
So, it's not necessarily a UPS box next to the UPS store.
No.
It could be an Amazon box next to Kohl's. So, it got me thinking like, what, do we want these things littered through the city or should we? And, you know, I don't know if, how we could do this, but it would really be nice to have, because this is a way of the future because of the Amazon. Right, this is, especially people that don't want boxes in the front of their house, or they live in a condo or an apartment, and they don't really want the boxes, or there's access issues to get in there. What I would like to see, and this is, you know, I'm playing the magic wand here, is have one central area, almost like the post office on Tyler. We have one area on Tyler that's central to the city, and they could, it could be one secure area, well-lit, where all this stuff could go. You could have the Amazon box there, you could have the FedEx box there, and that's the central pickup for the city rather than littering these things all through the city.
No, I agree with the outcome, but...
How do you get there?
You'd require some developer to say that this is how he wants to dedicate his land, and I'm not sure you can direct that unless the city buys it.
But that's, I think, if I had the grand plan, would be that, you know, that's why the post office doesn't have 30 post offices in the city, they've got one in the middle.
You used to have mailbox.
Sure would be nice to be able to push whomever or whoever in the direction of a central, whatever you call it. And it could have one lighted area that could be secure, that we wouldn't have to monitor 35 different locations. I don't even know how we do that, but that would be nice.
Sounds like socialism to me.
I actually think that defeats the purpose of what Amazon or UPS or what their business plan would be. They would want multiple smaller locations.
Yeah, they want, I think convenience is the idea.
Oh, I get it, but you might wind up with 60 of these.
Right. So, what we have to do is manage how they look where they're placed.
Anyway, that's my little two cents. Other than I, I do like the screening, the mason wall. I don't know if I'm in love with the plastic fences, though. You know, the vinyl fencing.
I think it might be a site-by-site.
It's going to be almost site-specific. But if we have vinyl in here, how do you then say that we want you to do mason, we don't want you to do vinyl?
That's our choices. With the number under F1, where it says, it says the things about, doesn't obstruct public and private sidewalks, roadways, aisles, I'd like to include fire lanes in there. Just because the fire lane may not be used as a standard thing, but it's required that the fire department have access around most buildings. And so, as we add to the edges or behind, I'd want to make sure that the fire lane is not compromised. So, I would put fire lane as one of the items in that number, in that first paragraph.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Have an additional comment, and this may have already been covered. On their F, we're still talking about the cell service parcels and number five. We've got an actual length defined and a height defined, but we really don't have any width. Is that, as Brian mentioned before, you know, these could be bigger than the three-foot depth, it could be two conics boxes, and that's a whole different animal? Or is that somewhat covered under number three where you talk about screening? Does that sort of lead into that? We don't define a width, for example, or an area maximum?
Mr. Chairman? I don't know that there is a definite depth. Is that, if that's what we're talking about per se of these? Based on the research that we found, they all seem to have a standard size to them. Now, that could evolve, but I agree with the comment that that's where the screen comes into play. Yeah, and this is a new concept, but to Brian's point, which is why we incorporated it in here, is that I don't think these are going away. I think these are going to be what we're going to see a lot of. And, you know, it's, I guess it's getting ahead of it. To want them to be only inside buildings is nice, but I think practically, I think they, we have to consider the fact that there's a convenience factor in having them outside. And that's why we decided to address them this way. So, could this be something that we revisit and modify as, you know, as we go? Certainly. But this was based on the research we were able to find. These were the numbers that we came up with that seemed to be very consistent throughout the different sources.
Kathy, I have a question. And I hope I'm... These, just thinking, following right along with what you just said, this may be the wave of the future that these things start to want to be all over. What limits them to, is it limited someplace in here? And I'm sorry if I can't find it right away. Is this limited to only commercial zoning?
This is in the, this is for commercial industrial zones, yes. 116104 only addresses.
So, someone can't come to us later and say, "Well, you know, we have this subdivision, and we have this awkward little piece in the front. We want to put one of these collection boxes there." That's not going to happen.
Right.
Or at one of their, you know, these new subdevelopments have these centralized mailbox.
Right, and with the mailbox, they want to put a UPS box, too.
Right, because it makes, because it's convenient.
That's not acceptable.
Right, Kathy? We have these centralized mail pickup stations now in these subdevelopments. It can't go in one of those.
No, correct.
Okay, that's right.
We did add the language about the screening for the propane sales exchange areas as you requested under item I to F on page five. That was the last change that we made based on the discussion at the July 30th meeting.
So, I can't remember if we talked about this at the July 30th, but the bulk tanks? What about the vertical tanks? I know, I know there's at least one in the city.
And on page five...
That's got to be, yeah.
On page 53B, it has to be in a horizontal direction whenever possible.
Right, so what about the tanks that are not possible to be in a horizontal direction? Are we still requiring the same screening? Okay. I just wanted to be clear.
Which would be a challenge.
Yeah, it would be a huge challenge. Yeah, they're 10, 15 feet high.
Okay, that's good.
Do you think you could get an engineering?
Vertical?
Yeah.
Well, you know, actually, we had the fire chief look at it. He was comfortable with the way we had proposed it.
Okay, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
The motion is to send it up to counsel.
Yes. With the adjustments that were included, Kathy has her record.
Edwin, you're ready.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Berkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes.
Thank you.
There's number three here. Larry?
I do not see number three in attendance.
Mr. Miller, what do we do?
Well, the first thing we need to do is take it off the table.
Okay.
So, we need a motion to do that.
Motion to remove from the table.
Second. Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Berkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes.
Then we would have a motion to approve the project. My position is that if the applicant is not here, he is absent at his peril. Anybody disagree with me on that?
Not here.
Oh, he's not here. If he's not here, then at this point in time, we could entertain a motion to approve with... Kathy, help me on this one. I think you put 11 conditions on it.
Motion to approve with 11 conditions.
Second.
Mr. Tiedemann?
No.
Mr. Varga?
No.
Mr. Cicero?
No.
Mr. Cook?
No.
Mr. Haddon?
No.
Mr. Berkovich?
No.
Mr. Snow?
No.
Finally, Mr. Chairman, I would ask for findings on this, and those findings could be as simple as, for the reasons in Ms. Mitchell's staff's excellently prepared report on this particular case, I think that's a fair reason for denying this. And I think that a motion to finding by various members of this commission that they agree with Ms. Mitchell's report would be satisfactory.
Edwin, you're ready.
Mr. Tiedemann?
I agree with what was just stated, what Mr. Miller just stated. This is just not an appropriate area for this.
Mr. Varga?
I agree with the, the, Mitchel's statements, also my own personal observations that the way the business is operated could not function under the requirements of the proposal.
Mr. Cicero?
I agree with what has been stated, and I agree with Ms. Mitchell's reasons.
Mr. Cook?
I agree with the staff report, especially the comment of this location abuts a residential district, and the proposed use is not compatible with the established neighborhood on Burr Ridge Avenue.
Mr. Haddon?
I agree with the staff report. The administration is not in favor of this proposal.
Mr. Berkovich?
I as well agree with the administration's review and their findings is incompatible with the neighborhood.
Mr. Snow?
I would agree with the comments based on Ms. Mitchell's comments in her staff report. That's prepared for tonight's meeting.
You're satisfactory to me.
Anything else, Ms. Mitchell? Yeah, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.